Good morning, everybody. It's December 29, 2020, and it's 10:00 a.m. And I hereby called the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And I would ask that anybody who care to would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And we are again meeting with public access via Zoom due to their continuing COVID-19 pandemic. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved by Heddins, second by Olson. Heddins? Olson? Okay, Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. We'll go on to updates on COVID-19. Are there any updates from staff today? Hearing none. Any updates from the supervisors? And Supervisor Heddins usually have up-to-date numbers for us. Is there anything?
Looks like statewide, there are 1,475 new cases, 67 deaths. Story County has 39 new cases. We're now at 7,909, and we have a total of 29 deaths.
Okay, the new cases are being lower is a good thing, certainly. Let's hope it holds. Any other updates? If not, then we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to comment on, to address any topics on today's agenda. Is there anybody here who's a member of the public who has a comment for this at this time? If so, either raise your hand using the Zoom function or unmute yourself with star nine, please. Seeing and hearing nobody, I will close public comment number one. And we'll go on to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with request for immediate action. Are there any such requests? Seeing none. We do not have any agency reports today, so I'll skip that. And we don't have minutes to consider, so we'll go on to personnel actions. I would entertain a motion for approval of personnel actions as they are listed.
Seconded by Heddins.
Okay, Olson?
Yes.
Okay, Heddins?
Aye.
Okay, Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Now, we'll go on to consent agenda. And I would like to pull item five for discussion. Are there any other items that anybody would like to pull?
No, no.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda less item five.
Still moved, Heddins. Second, Olson.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Heddins? Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda with the exception of number five are approved then. And let me just ask, do we have anybody from Herta on the phone?
No.
Brooke Ramsey?
Oh, she is on.
Yeah, Brooke's on.
Okay, good. Okay, I can see you now. Thank you. I had just a couple of questions, but I'm going to let the other supervisors first if they have any questions about the contract that's been presented.
I don't think so. I think this was just a carryover from the current contract.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. These were numbers that had already been discussed previously, I think, with the exception of the $65,000. So yeah, I don't have any.
Is this the item? Have we discussed this since July 21, when Brooke and Julia gave a really extensive presentation then? Was that our last discussion?
That was our last discussion, what has been held or what we've been waiting for, because I'm looking at Sandra now, because she, you know, dealt with Brooke and a lot of this, is looking for an appropriate amount of the funds that originally were from asset for county and looking at how much that they could draw down of our county funds for city rides. And so there was an original proposed number. It was, to me, it looked a little high. So then I proposed the six, I proposed back to Sandra and Brooke the $65,000 because it looked like that was going to take through March, take the contract through at least March, given ridership use right now. So that's my involvement here behind the scenes.
Yeah, I recall a lot of the utilization of county funds for city funds.
Yes, that's, yeah, yeah, for the, actually, the slot of county funds for FTA funds, right, that used to pay for the city rides, right?
Okay, and, um... So are they still drawing down city funds? Are you still drawing down city funds, Brooke, or is that exhausted, or? Brooke, you're muted. Could you unmute yourself? Really, okay.
Sorry, I was just finishing up another call.
Oh, okay.
I didn't hear anything. I apologize.
Okay, um, the question I just had was, are you, for the city rides that you're wanting to draw down the $65,000 of county asset funds, are, have you drawn down everything the city had? Have you drawn down that entire, was it 41,000 already?
Yeah, so we did that. We would have expended all of those at the end of October. So we haven't billed the county anything yet for the month of November. We were pending, you know, getting this final amendment done on the contract.
Okay, because we haven't received any monthly reports yet. And I figured that was wise, because you hadn't drawn down any yet. But I went back and listened to the July 21 meeting, as well as looking at the minutes. And we talked about you providing monthly reports on what you're drawing down to the supervisors.
Okay, I know we had given some updates to Sandra, and I think Loris was copied, but we can, we can pull the data from all four of those months and send that over. Can we just send that to Sandra? Is that okay?
Yeah, she can send it to all of us. That'd be good. And...
I think I just got a one sentence, just to let you know. Brooke just sent a one-sentence kind of, you know, we're here status. There was no detailed report.
Okay, thank you. And...
Sandra has her hand up.
Okay, Sandra?
I just wanted to say that they have not drawn down any funds when it comes to whatever's on this contract. So anything that's being authorized by this amendment, they have not drawn down anything associated with that. None of the carryover funds for the pilot, none of the amounts for city trips.
Okay, and when, thank you. And when I was going through this, I noticed that both of our motions, both for the county funds to be used for the city rides and the van pool service, both of those were for FY '20, and the understanding being that it was a stopgap for the city. I think that's in fact what was the phrase that was used, and the van pool was a startup. So am I correct that you're not looking, yeah, it was a stopgap measure for the city funds and a supplement to get it started for the van pool? Is that still your intent, that this is just FY '21 funds from the county and that any, all of this will go through the asset process for FY '22?
Correct. And Loris actually had a question that I hopped on your meeting last week, because I kind of expected in the asset questions, Loris would have brought that up. But she had proactively asked a couple of questions about our asset budget for '22, because we didn't have a new program request for the van pool program. But, you know, knowing that we're currently receiving some CARES Act funding, which we've talked about earlier this year, and that some of our 5311 funds can be carried over, the DOT said we can make that request, we feel comfortable in the amount that we're asking for, for '22 under that asset. So we didn't include an increase in, for the van pool, or, you know, asking anything for the City of Ames, because, again, like you said, it was a stopgap measure, so.
Okay, that's good. And then the last thing is, I understand that you were meeting, perhaps it was last week, with Cyrra to discuss Dial-A-Ride. Can you tell us what came out of those discussions?
The meeting's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yep. So we can, I can send an update. Can I just send that to Sandra as well?
Certainly. That's okay with me. Because I know the City of Ames has expressed concern, that they think that there are people who could be served by Dial-A-Ride that aren't. And so we would like to hear what you have to say on that.
Yeah, we, you know, I had originally pulled some numbers on fiscal year 2019. Excuse me. I was trying to see if I still happen to have those handy right here in front of me. But we had originally pulled them before the city council had even reviewed the asset numbers. You know, we had kind of given them, just like we did with you earlier in the summer, kind of a heads up that we knew this was going to, you know, be an item that needed to be discussed and that we had some concerns about it. And I'm sorry, I don't have that right here in front of me, but I believe for fiscal year 19, we had something like 466 unique riders in the City of Ames that had no other funding source. So they're not riding like a Medicaid program, or under community service funding, or under Dial-A-Ride. And then since then, I ran a, pulled down some information on more current riders. And, you know, during COVID, having less people writing in general and less frequently writing. So we kind of pulled that down with some basic demographics about them. And that's what we'll be talking about tomorrow with the Dial-A-Ride staff. If there's anyone on paper that's kind of glaringly obvious that we can reach out to and see about having them complete the Dial-A-Ride application. But we know that there are some people who aren't disabled, who are writing the service, the herd of service. I know Loris has talked about one of your constituents that is an Ames resident, and she does have small children, and she also works. And so she needs to be able to, in a short timeframe, get, get the kids dropped off at their various educational places and also get to work. And, you know, doing that on a fixed drought service doesn't work for her. So some of that, there are people who we do have concerns that without support, they would be left without service. And I know nobody wants that, including the city. It's just a matter of how do we balance that out?
Okay, we'd appreciate whatever information you can share with us after that meeting. Thank you. Um, that answers my questions. I think that's all that I, the monthly reports was the issue. And we didn't have that number when we met back in July. So, so knowing that number, it was 60, 65,000, that still leaves plenty of money there to cover the rural rides that you anticipate, correct?
Yeah, and the 65,000, Sandra and I met and talked, and then we did a follow-up, just kind of a follow-up with Loris, that I think if we're talking about November through the end of June, it's probably closer to 70, I think, $78,000, based on the rights that are being used in the city and the rights that are currently being used in the county. Of course, at that time, we didn't have a vaccine that had been approved. You know, we were really just looking as if everything stayed exactly as they were in October. And Loris had, had thought we should look at more of a shorter-term solution, getting us through March, knowing that we have a new supervisor coming onboard. And, you know, at that time, we could come back and give some updated information on how things were going. And if we needed to make adjustments for the last quarter of the year, we could do it at that time. Loris, correct me if I'm wrong?
Nope, that's it, exactly.
Brooke, are you saying you might need more than the 65,000? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, I think if we're, I think if we want to get us completely through fiscal year 20 with funding those rides, I'm not asking for more overall funding. This isn't asking for an increase. It's just saying, if we're looking at moving the money from the county, you know, from the rural county to help the City of Ames, I think we're, we're really talking about like 78,000. But Loris, I don't think felt comfortable in making that big of a commitment. So we talked about, you know, getting, getting through, covering the service in November, October, and the first quarter of the year, which would let your new supervisor, whichever new Herta Board member we may have, get up to speed with what we're doing and the projects that we have.
And I think it'd be important then, and I don't know how you would do this, but to do a projection of what the rural is going to cost, so that we're comfortable that that money is there.
Okay, um, what I, I had provided the, so the asset claim forms that we submit to the city and the county are both done on just a basic Excel sheet. And it says how many rides each month. So I had given that to Sandra, just to kind of show how we came up with the dollar amounts we thought we may need, and to be able to see what the average rides per month have been, you know, especially during COVID, since it's been so reduced. I can take those numbers and try to project them. It's hard, I think, now that we have the vaccine. I don't know, people might want to start going places, but we're just doing the best that we can during the pandemic to kind of project these. I know everybody's doing that. You guys are doing that, too.
I know, I know. What we're asking of you there isn't easy. But you also understand that primarily what our responsibility here is those rides for the rural residents. And we don't want to overspend that and say, sorry, you know, we're doing this because we can right now, but we can't let, we can't, we need to know with some certainty that there'll be enough money there for the rural residents.
Yeah, if I recall, I think, and I can pull this up real quick, but what I had provided to Sandra leading up to this contract adjustment was factoring if, I think the last couple of months, we had somewhere around 80 rides for the county residents. And if we moved that up to 100, just to give us some cushion for, you know, the possibility of a vaccine, or fewer cases with the mask mandates and such. So I think we felt pretty comfortable in the amount that the rural ridership would not, you know, receive a lack of funding to help them get where they needed to go.
Okay, okay, good. And I think in a few months, we'll know more. And I think that is a good suggestion to wait till about March, and then let's revisit. That's my thought.
Yeah. So just to be, I want to make sure I don't misunderstand what you've said, Lynda. You would like, you want me to go ahead and put those numbers together, maybe in a one-page summary document, and send that over to Sandra? And then, did you want to visit this again in a few weeks? Or do you want to go ahead and just have that document and then possibly, you know, go ahead and look at maybe March as an update?
Why don't you send it now? Other supervisors, and I'm going to ask Supervisor Heddins, since she will be on the board next year, because waiting till March, getting an update now and then waiting till March to revisit this, does that make sense to you?
Well, we don't know who's going to be on the Herta Board next year yet, because we haven't had an organizational meeting. So for what? We don't know that. Secondly, I think, I think Brooke's sending over that information now, but I think then having another update, you know, later, you know, maybe the end of January or early February would be nice, too. So we're kind of seeing those statistics as we move along.
So maybe present, send us some things and as of end of, now, and as of end of January, and then we would schedule a meeting in early February to review? Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Early February or somewhere in there, so that we're kind of prepared as we're going into March would be kind of my thought on it.
Okay.
Which is why I suggested that, kind of, that seems to be, then you'll have four months, four-plus months of billing history on both entities.
I do have one other question I just realized. The van pool program, how has that gone, just briefly?
Well, we, we hadn't started it yet, because we didn't have the final contract. So once we get through the meeting today, I do know that Enterprise is who we contract with, and I know that they already have some employers they had been meeting with before. So, and they understand the parameters. We had a meeting, and Loris and Sandra attended that. You know, they understand the parameters of who they're serving and what we need to be with the van pool as well. It's just kind of getting this final contract signed.
Okay, I was kind of surprised we hadn't seen the contract until now. So I don't know what all details had to be worked out there. But, so I'm glad to hear you, you haven't started it, because the contract hadn't been approved. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done. Any other questions? Okay, then we, we need to vote on this. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the Herta Contract Amendment. As presented.
I just already moved it, Lynda.
Okay.
Olson moved it, second.
I got it. Okay, Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's approved. Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. I appreciate your time. Thanks for being on.
Thank you.
In public hearing items, there are none. Additional items, we have Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley with a FY '21 budget.
Good morning, Board. While, while working through the budget for next year and taking action on things that are happening this year, I realized we better get a budget amendment done again quick. So, right in the middle of all of it, all of the budget, I'm going to, next year's budget, I'm going to ask for approval to send this to publication to amend the current year budget. A few things that are of note is that the auditor's office did get some CARES funding for elections. We ended up with $64,125 worth of CARES and a separate grant. So I'm asking to amend some of those dollars into our budget. We also have a few things you guys have approved recently, like the recorder's request to increase her, or to go ahead and sign a contract for records management. That's coming out of records management funds. The animal control, I'm going ahead and requesting that you put this in the amendment. She did budget it for next year, but would really like to get it done this year. And some of those dollars are coming out of special animal care, some out of the rural fund. Roadway construction coming out of secondary roads, that's where Darren thinks he's going to be for, for this year's construction. And then some other miscellaneous housekeeping items that we could get amended, if we could get amended in, would be awesome. So overall, we're looking to amend expenses by $977.7 and revenues by 1.75. Our ending fund balances are still, I did provide an ending fund balance breakdown for the assumption for June 30th, that you can obviously see. And unassigned has got about 1.4 million that is, there's about 1.4 in the general fund that's unassigned, over and above the 25% that we like. So basically, what I'd like to do is send it for publication. We'll have the public hearing on January 19th, the board meeting, and go from there. Any questions?
This is Loris. I have no questions, just a comment in that. Thank you once again, Lisa, of giving us very detailed numbers. They're very clearly presented, and I appreciate that. And also, just thank you, I guess, to the state and the federal with the CARES money that came back, because the 1.2 million of that is the majority of that 14, 1.4 million. So that's nice, because that's what the county's used to, looking at more than $225,000, which if we didn't have the CARES money, that's where we'd be sitting here as far as money to do any other requests or anything for the next six months. So, yeah, so just that comment on that. Thanks again, Lisa, for another good report.
Thanks, Loris.
No questions either. Just thank you for your report, Lisa.
Yep.
Lynda, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Yep, I got muted. Pardon me. I would entertain a motion for consideration, or for sending the FY '21 budget amendment information for publication and setting a public hearing for January 19th.
2021, so moved, second.
Heddins?
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. Okay, I didn't hear Lisa, I'm sorry. Merkin, aye, adopted. Then next, we have discussion and consideration of a hiring freeze exemption request for planner position. Amelia Shoneman. Amelia, can you unmute yourself? Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, this is a hiring freeze exemption for the planner position that is now filled with myself being appointed as the Director of the Department. As you know, we're a small department. We rely on our two planners to do, you know, many things from everyday permitting to longer-range work program items, and even, you know, with this year, help out with the Durachio debris site and our FEMA public assistance request. So it's a really essential position, so that our department can do those short-term activities that we need to serve the public, but also long-range planning projects. And I've included some numbers for you to look at about our activity levels. You know, they're not really that far down with COVID in terms of building permits. We've had a lot of little projects. They're really at 2019 levels. And so I haven't, there hasn't really been a sharp decrease in activity with COVID-19 this year. We are down from, you know, 2017 and 2018 levels, but really, you know, those were a pretty high level of activity for our department. And we do have a lot of long-range planning projects on our plate that we'd love to tackle with this planner position filled.
Any questions for Amelia?
I have none. I have none.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for an exemption to the hiring freeze for the planner position.
This is Head, motion by Heddins to approve. Second, Olson.
Heddins?
Aye. Aye.
Merkin, aye. So, next, we do not have any department reports or any other reports. Upcoming agenda items, we obviously, next Monday, have an organizational meeting of the board. Are there any other agenda items to be discussed now, that we need to get on next Monday?
I do not, honey.
Okay, and are we, do we have a regular meeting on Tuesday?
No.
No, just on Monday instead. Okay, good. Okay, um, nothing else then. Public forum number two, comments from the public and items not on the agenda, and the board cannot take any action on any of them today because of the requirements, the open meetings law, but might do so, do so in the future. Are there any members of the public who have a public comment at this point? Latifah?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second and say thank you to Loris for the past four years, for your service to Story County. And I just wanted to say thank you and recognize you.
Well, thank you, Latifah. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. I wish you the best going forward. I know every interaction I've had with you has been pleasant. You're bright, you're concerned. You're bright, you're concerned, and you're enthusiastic. So, yes, so I'll be watching from afar, and I do promise it'll be from afar, not here, okay? All right, okay, so best wishes.
Thank you, thank you. And I, and I know your dedication to Story County is, um, received loud and clear everywhere. Um, I know that we'll have lots of opportunities to continue to, um, work together.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to comment on? Okay, then I will, uh, close public forum number two. And we'll go to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. And I'll start with Supervisor Olson.
I have no meetings left, okay? That's kind of weird if I was changing over at Keller. I want to say thank you to everyone. Um, I have learned so much in the last four years. And I learned about myself, I've learned about you guys and from you. Um, I was just commenting to somebody earlier today about the last five years especially for the staff at Story County has been kind of a roller coaster with loss and, and new faces coming onboard, of kind of a revolving scenario here. So, um, and you guys have held fast, held steady, and showed excellence. Um, and I know it's been stressful at times, many times. I wish one of the things for you this, next year is stability. And for all of us, the ability to go forward with some kind of new normal. But I have no, no fault in, in, and, in thinking that Story County is not going to do well. You guys are going to do great, because you've already shown over and over again that you do great. And, um, uh, you've got great leadership. Um, I have made a commitment to not be coming back, okay, on a regular basis and all, or whatever. I am going to stay involved with the Story County Housing Trust Fund and try to do some things with housing and food. But I'd like to stay in the background on that, because you've got a good leadership team here. And, um, so I don't feel any need to really weigh in on anything. But I am leaving copious notes, okay, for you guys by Thursday. So, anyway, I want to thank people who've, uh, said goodbye to me already. And, um, I will get back and reply to, to the emails I've got a few left to reply to yet. But I do wish everyone the best. This has been, um, an honor to serve with you and an honor that you have allowed me to call me, to call you my coworkers and vice versa. So thank you for that. I'm done.
Supervisor Hennings?
Thank you. So I don't have any meetings this particular week. Um, next week, we'll certainly hear up with our organizational meeting and then starting a budget hearings, um, and stuff, or budget workshops, excuse me. Um, so we'll certainly be busy come, come Monday, the fourth and stuff. Um, I do want to thank Loris for all her dedication. I was thinking back, I think you and I first met probably about twenty years ago when I was on the state rehabilitation board.
Oh, my goodness.
So we go back quite, quite a ways. Um, and our paths always kind of crossed a little bit, but never kind of intersected. Um, so it's been very, uh, very nice to have the opportunity to work with you. Uh, you've been a great mentor for me. I mean, uh, seventeen years in the legislature gives you a perspective, uh, but coming to the county level, um, your knowledge, and as you would always say, these quote-unquote senior member, uh, really mentored me along. And so I do want to appreciate, or thank you for, for all of that and helping get me acclimated here and, and moving forward. And, uh, I wish you the best. Um, I know you will stay active in the community, um, but I also hope that you just take care of yourself as well. Uh, and I will be watching from afar on that one.
Thank you, okay. Thanks.
Okay, um. I thought I lost the session here. Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good. I thought that would be awkward. Um, I want to just second everything that I've heard said about Loris. Uh, Latifah said she always has the interest of Story County at heart. I have seen that in the last two years. I've seen that before then. Uh, Loris and I go back a long time as well. I think I first met you, Loris, when you were covering a Gilbert Franklin, um, our Franklin Township trustee meeting about the, the fire agency there. And, um, we, we work together with legal women voters and, and also campaigns. Um, I've learned a lot from you. You have just a wealth of knowledge. You don't forget a thing. Um, you're inquisitive. I have, um, as I said, I have learned a very, a lot for you, particularly in the last two years. I appreciate all of it. And going to miss working with you, but, uh, we'll hopefully see you around and we'll be talking, okay?
Okay.
And I, and I second, take care of yourself.
Thank you. Thank you too, for allowing me and for our staff in the Board of Supervisors Office for allowing me that extra time I've needed sometimes because of my health. So thank you. All right, onward to twenty twenty-one, right?
Okay, onward to twenty twenty-one. I think we're all ready for that. Um, if there's nothing else then, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I so move. Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hennings? Merkin, aye. We're adjourned.
We'll talk to you later. Bye.
Thank you. Talk to you later. Bye-bye.